Hey, everybody. Good evening. I'm like to call the meeting to order on December 22 at 6:30 PM. The Canton Township Board Meeting. Clerk Seagrist, can you please take role?
All right. Trustee Borninski.
Present and in Canton Township, in my home.
Thank you. Foster.
Good evening from Canton Township, my home.
Ganguly. Is not present currently. We'll see if that changes. Graham Hughdeck.
I am present at the Canton Township offices.
All right. Does the record reflect that Clerk Seagrist is in attendance and he is at his home in Canton Township? Treasurer Slavens. Looks like is currently not in attendance yet. And Trustee Snyder.
I am here at home in Canton Township.
All right. Men of Supervisor, if the other two join, I would just ask that you ask them to identify where they are in attendance. If you can do that as they join.
I will. Thank you. So we are now going to go into closed session. Can I have a motion to go in closed session, please?
Men of Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for the purposes of union negotiations.
Support.
Motion's been supported. Clerk Seagrist, please take role.
Borninski.
Here.
The appropriate.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
All right, Foster.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Graham Hughdeck.
Hi.
Seagrist, hi. Snyder.
Hi.
All right.
Great. For those attendees, we'll just let you know, we're going to be leaving this Zoom meeting. You can stay on. It will stay open and then we will be going to another meeting and then coming back after it's open. If at about seven o'clock, you don't have, if you aren't on, you can call back into this meeting. Okay, it's going to close session. Here we are back in open session. Clerk Seagrist, can you please take role again? And everybody remember, we're going to have to say where we're calling from.
Men of Supervisor, I move that the board move from closed session back into open session.
Support.
Great. So it's been supported. Clerk Seagrist, please take role.
Borninski.
I'm here and I am in Canton Township.
Foster.
I'm here in Canton Township. Did I say aye or are we?
I would be voting on the question.
Okay, so I.
All right.
I, sorry.
All right. Ganguly.
I am actually in Fort Myers, Florida.
All right. Graham Hughdeck.
Hi, in Canton Township.
All right. Seagrist, aye, Canton. Slavens.
Aye. Are we saying where we are now or?
Yes.
Okay, Canton Township, township, Paul.
All right, and Snyder.
Hi, still in my, my office.
Thank you. Can I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Men of Supervisor, I move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Aye.
Was that support?
Support.
Last meeting of the year.
That's true. Motion's been supported. Clerk Seagrist, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Okay, vote by roll call. All right.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hughdeck.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion passes to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes for December 8, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Support.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call, Clerk Seagrist?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hughdeck.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now on the agenda for public comment. Do I see any public comments? Please limit your comments to three minutes and you can address them to me and please give your name and address, which will help us answer your questions. I don't see any hands. You can hit star six if you're on the phone, although I don't see any phones either. Okay, great. Thank you. The next one, do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
Men of Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Support.
Thank you. Motion's supported. Clerk Seagrist, can you please take role for the vote?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hughdeck.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a legislative update by Stephanie Johnson of Corey Johnson and Leave It LLC. I think she needs to be promoted.
I'm going to assume that she is Stephanie in the.
Definitely.
Spence and she has been promoted, Stephanie promoted to a panelist. If you want to unmute yourself, you can address the body.
Hi, Stephanie. You can start whenever you'd like. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm not used to the one-way Zoom. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm again providing you a legislative update, kind of a year-end wrap-up. As you have noticed or probably heard all over the news, it was quite an eventful lame duck, even though going into it, we expected it to be what we call, would call lame lame duck. It ended up not being so lame. As you know, the feds have finally reached an agreement on a $900 billion relief package that is likely to be signed by the president. And that's going to provide some relief, not only for individuals as far as some extended unemployment benefits to the tune of $300 a week, but also a one-time stimulus payment of $600. There is some caveats to that, depending if you filed individually or if you file as a couple. And then there's some extra dollars in there for children as well. Again, all one time. There was some additional relief for hospitals and PPP COVID vaccinations, things of that nature, as well as another PPP program for businesses that had been really hit hard. Restaurants, movie theaters, entertainment venues and the like. So we are very hopeful about that. We, we did have our own supplemental that was passed right up on the last day of session for the state. And it's about $465 million supplemental package. It also extends unemployment benefits for workers. It extends them from 20 weeks to 26 weeks. It's a short-term, one-time extension for people who are currently already receiving benefits. It extended the deadline for hazard pay for first responders. They now have until the end of December to apply for the hazard pay that was awarded earlier in the fall. In addition, there is some other grants for businesses and restaurants going forward. And then some, some additional funds for schools, PPP and vaccine. I'm sorry, personal protection equipment. There's, we got a lot of the same acronyms going on. So some money for personal protection equipment, as well as some additional funding for schools. So those are much-needed relief. We're, we're very grateful that that has been implemented. I know that there's going to be a lot of people who have been worried with their unemployment benefits coming up to an end here, if that was going to be extended. What didn't really occur in this supplemental is any additional assistance to local government. We are hopeful that there will be another supplemental next year, early in the year, and that they will take some opportunity there to address some of the issues that local governments have been experiencing with the whole COVID situation. As you know, the, the temporary freeze or suspension of, of like in-service, in-room dining and things like that is, is been extended to January 15. Movie theaters, casinos, and some other outdoor activities are allowed now with some very strict limitations. We don't know, you know, how much further if, if they will be extended again after the 15th of January. I, I have to believe that hopefully we can get the, our caseloads have been coming down significantly every day. Today's cases were, I think, about 3,000 new positives. And that's set down substantially, substantially from what it was about two, three weeks ago. So hopefully we are seeing a good trajectory where we can maybe get back to lifting some of these freezing of, of some of the service industry work that we, that they depend on and, and some of the dining and things like that. In addition, high schools, they can now go back full-time and most schools are done for the holiday recess. So obviously that won't really take effect until likely January 3rd or 4th, January 4th, which would be the Monday. At the end of the year, there was a lot of legislation that was going through, particularly much of it related to COVID and, and trying to continue some of the policies that they implemented earlier in the year and continue them into the new year. Some of those expired the end of the year. For instance, having your public meetings like this via a remote has been extended, or I'm sorry, the legislation was passed and has gotten the governor's desk to extend the opportunity to do that to March 31. I believe that the bill will likely be signed into law. It is on the governor's desk. It was presented to her late yesterday. Um, we have some other legislation. For instance, a deferment of summer property taxes. That is also on the governor's desk, Senate Bill 943. Not clear yet if the governor's going to sign that. It passed both chambers of the legislature by a partisan party line vote. So we are going to monitor that and see where that leads us. Obviously, any deferment of property tax. And this is more on personal property, not, not residential property. So this will have an impact on, you know, your local general fund dollars as well as the state general fund dollars. So we're going to keep a close eye on that and see where that goes to the governor, see how the governor reacts to that. It is on her desk. It has been presented to her. It was presented to her late yesterday. Let's see. Water Shut-Off Restoration Act was signed by the governor today, Senate Bill 241. The governor signed several bills later, late in the afternoon today. And those are some of the big ones that kind of stuck out to me that I knew that the board would be interested in knowing about. With that, I would be open to any questions you have. I'll do my best to answer them and see if there's any other questions or anything else that you would like to know.
Summer.
Hi, Stephanie. I just have a few questions. I haven't really had the chance to follow some of this legislation. So I just wondered if you could tell me if it passed or if we're expecting the government or the governor to sign it. So what was the status on the criminal justice reform bills on sentencing and not treating folks that are pulled over who might have a suspended license as a misdemeanor instead of a civil infraction?
I believe those have all been passed and have been signed. There's so many criminal justice packages that were floating out there between expungement, juvenile justice. Even at the very end, there's some legislation going to the governor's desk to allow expungement of operating while intoxicated. If the, if the offense happened within, I think, 10 or 20 years, you can expunge that offense. So there's a, there's several of those packages that are out there, but I believe that they all have passed and, and will likely be signed if they haven't been already. I can do some further digging for you and send you maybe a summary of the criminal justice stuff if that works for you.
That would be great. Also, I had a question about SB 420, which I, I think it passed the Senate, but I wasn't sure if it passed the House, that would allow debt collectors to collect cashed-up debts in person. I know that a lot of people were concerned about public safety implications of that and people pretending to be debt collectors so that they could go up to people and collect those debts or.
And that was SB 420?
Yeah.
Uh, that one, I don't, I want to say that did not end up going to the governor. But let me do a quick double check for you on that. I can, I can look that up now.
Okay. And then the other thing, I was wondering if you could talk some about, I know the governor signed an executive order, I think it was today, on the eviction diversion program and the program to allow folks to use SNAP, SNAP benefits for pre-prepared meals. And they could use that as restaurants. She did that as an attempt to help restaurant owners. So I just wondered if you could talk some about that because I would think that our community would be interested in that.
Yeah, the SNAP benefits for, to allow restaurants, that will take effect. I think that takes effect on the 22nd, which is actually was yesterday. She just put that out today. Today was the first that I read about it, so I don't have a whole lot of information to share you other than what the press release stated. Regarding the other question you had, I'm sorry, I forget.
It was the eviction diversion program.
Okay, I'll have to look that one up as well. I was not familiar with that. I know that there, the, the, the federal stimulus package that passed had some funding in there for landlords specifically for that. But I'm not aware of anything that was done at the state level. So I will look that up and add it to the criminal justice list for you. In addition, the Senate Bill 420 actually did make it to the governor's desk. It has been presented to her and it is waiting to see if it gets her signature.
Thank you. Yeah, I read the governor's press release about the eviction diversion program and the SNAP benefits today, but I didn't read the order, so.
Okay, I, I did not, to be honest with you. I just quickly saw the press release myself, so I will look up that order and make sure you have that as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kate?
Hi, Stephanie. Thank you for all the updates. That's great. I was wondering if you knew if Senate Bills 17 and 18, which give easier access for epinephrine to firefighters and first responders, if you knew if the governor had signed those yet?
She has not. They've been presented to her and they are awaiting her signature.
Okay, thank you.
They were presented to her on the 21st.
Okay. Hopefully she'll sign them.
They passed with basically unanimous support in the legislature. So I think that that's a pretty good sign that they, there probably not a lot of controversy behind that, so.
Yeah, there shouldn't be. But.
Thanks. Chad, I saw your hand.
I just have one question. Stephanie's helped us out a lot with maybe an update with the racketeering statute that include organized retail crime. And I believe it was stifled. Is that correct?
It was. COVID got in our way on that one for sure. It, I'm hopeful that this next legislative session will have a, maybe, no bill is ever simple to get passed, but we'll have maybe a little less of an uphill battle on that just because of the COVID. The, the COVID situation's getting taken care of. It's starting to, the, the, the black cloud that's been overall, everything within the legislature's starting to lift a little bit. We also have some new individuals coming in to, to both the House and Senate that I think might be more helpful for us on that as well.
I appreciate it. That helps shift the burden, the financial burden of investigating those cases with our retailer. So thank you.
Well, we were, we were successful getting the bill introduced, which is going to make getting it reintroduced a whole lot easier this next go-around as well.
Thank you.
Any, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that brings up another thing, you know. It's in January, anything that didn't pass and make it to the governor's desk for a signature dies, starts all over again January 1. We have, you know, as a, a number of new House members, we probably won't know committee members until likely early to mid-January is usually when that gets announced. And of course, that makes a huge difference in how we approach and who we approach on various issues as well. So just know that that's going to be coming in early on. January 15 is the Revenue Estimating Conference and that's going to be via Zoom as well. And so any of you could probably, can get the access to that and log in and watch that Revenue Estimating Conference. I think that we're, we're kind of on pins and needles again, trying to understand where we're going to be in the revenue situation in the state. I mean, we, we expected some pretty dire consequences in August, September. We ended up, we ended up doing very well, I thought. I think the state rebounded quite well from the March and April and May shutdowns. But now, you know, being a year into this, what kind of effect that's going to have on our revenue is kind of an unknown. So that January 15 meeting is going to be important to understand that.
Diane, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I have a, thanks for the updates. I always appreciate it. I know you've been busy with lame duck. A couple, and I know they've gone to the governor's desk, but one is the poverty exemption Senate Bill 1234. Just curious if you, when, if she signs it, if you could just let me know because that's kind of a timely one.
Well, that's good that you asked. She did sign it. She signed it this afternoon, late this afternoon. There, there were a number of bills signed from like four to six o'clock this evening, I know. So, and that was one of them.
Okay, thank you so much. The other one I'm watching, and that'll, it could impact revenue sharing in the school aid fund, is the Senate Bill 1153. That's that Meyer Warehouse Exemption PPT. Do you know?
Those have been presented to the governor. They have not been signed yet, so that's something that I still have to kind of bird-dog the governor's folks to see where their head is on that. They did pass, that was a package of three bills, if I'm not mistaken, and they, they did pass along party line votes. Obviously, those are going to have an impact on the general fund and the school aid fund, so there's some controversy there.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Well, Stephanie, just out of curiosity, so post-election, there's been a couple of oversight hearings over the elections. Does it appear that the legislators have been able to learn anything about Michigan election law while they've been conducting these hearings? Is this germane to justice election or do you, my, my fear is that this might carry over into the next legislative term and they might try to enact some solutions to their proposed problems that they might see with the election. Are you aware of any strategy around these oversight hearings or is this just a theater right now or posturing for certain members?
I'm not aware of any strategy, but I think your concern is valid that this will carry over into the next legislative session. I know on the last day, there was a resolution in the House to call for an investigation in the election fraud and the Speaker chose not to take up that resolution, which I thought, you know, was, was a very interesting move. So I, I do, I do believe this is going to continue. It probably, hopefully, won't continue to the same level of venom that it has, that it has had over the past month or so. But I think that you're going to see probably a lot of legislation to reform of the election process come out as a result. Whether, whether it gets a lot of legs or not is to be seen. I know today the Attorney General released a press, press release where she intends to go after some of the attorneys who, you know, for misrepresentation and, and take them to their various disciplinary boards as well. So it's, it's not over for sure.
Yeah, I'll probably be reaching out then. I'm on the Legislative Committee for the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks and we have a lot as well as Agmen. So as, as, as we move through that body to try to at least have the people who administer the elections at the table when we talk form, I'll probably be calling, you know, reaching out to you as often as I possibly can to make sure that, you know, we attack it from both sides.
I would appreciate that very much. I think that would be good. So we're all on the same page and that helps me navigate these waters for your behalf even better. So that, that would be good.
Great. Wendy?
Hey, Wendy. Hi, Stephanie. I don't know if you've heard anything yet or it might be being talked about at the Revenue Estimating Conference coming up here next month. But do you know, has the state mentioned when they're thinking about or when they're planning on taking into account the census adjustment for the revenue sharing payment?
That's a good question. I don't know. But let me see if there's an answer out there for you. I'll do some digging and get back with you. I've not heard anything about it at all.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Greg?
Yeah, I saw today in the stimulus package, I was wondering if you had any information or if you know when we'll get more information. There was a, potentially a package in there for performing arts venues to receive some revenue.
Yeah, there's some grants available to them. I think they're capped out at 40,000 per grant. But yes, there is some grant that's in the state supplemental that was passed.
Okay.
I believe, yeah.
Very good.
They are capped. It's not, it, when I, when I saw the cap, I was a little surprised. I would have thought it would have been higher than that. But there is some, some help out there for them.
Okay, very good. Do you know if there was any conditions, what that has to be used for, or if it's?
I did not dig that far into it, but I can do my best to try to get you that information too. I'm going to guess Treasury still probably has to come up with some of that criteria as well. But let me see what I can dig for you as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you. Anyone else? So Stephanie, another thing is, have you seen anything on technology or infrastructure coming down the pipeline that they're planning on doing? I don't know if they signed anything or you're seeing something coming?
I haven't, not, not of late. And I'm not aware, I mean, I'm sure there's a plan somewhere to try to do more of that, but I'm not aware of any at this moment.
Okay, there was also a report today that went out, was co-published with Bridge Magazine, basically stating that in Michigan, judges have sent children to locked detention centers. As more states move towards reform and focused on non-violent juvenile, there's in the community, Michigan continues to lock them up even more than other states. Are you seeing any changes along that, those lines with the Supreme Court or?
Well, I mean, the, the juvenile justice reform package passed, when did that get signed? That was signed, has it been a year now? It was signed this legislative session, but it, it, it may not be quite a year yet. And again, when they signed it, one of the challenges was you can make the changes, but you have to put your money where your mouth is, right? And they have to be funded. And so I think that there's still a disconnect between the policy and the, the funding for it. And I, I think if you're still seeing a high incidence of juveniles not getting particularly, well, this was the raise the age package where they were taking it up to 17. Again, it's, it's a question of resources and finances to provide the, the additional supports that that particular juvenile needs. So that's my level of knowledge and my experience with it thus far. I'm not aware of any new challenges that has come as a result. This legislative session really has been kind of the, the criminal justice reform legislative session. I mean, that's probably the one thing, take COVID out of the equation. That's the one thing that. is take COVID out of the equation, that's the one thing that they did the most of, was reforms within criminal justice policy. Um, it wa- it really was remarkable when you sit back and you look at all the legislation that went through and the changes that were made. Uh, things that had been tried for years, but all of a sudden the stars aligned and it got the support it needed, and it, it moved, and it really changed things considerably.
We just have to fund it now, though, is what you're saying.
I think so. I think that's going to be a real challenge, because, you know, again, providing those supports, that comes with a pretty big price tag. Um, particularly those community supports and uh, you know, the psychologists, the psychiatry, whatever, those types of things that they need, that, that additional family support, that comes with a price.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you, Stephanie, and actually, this is very informative. I know everybody and don't, Michael, you had one more?
I was saying like waving, thank you.
But actually, we would like to do this on a more frequent basis.
I would like that too. Thank you, because it would help me continue knowing where your concerns are. Uh, because you threw some curveballs at me tonight, I wouldn't have anticipated, so um that would, that would help.
Maybe bi-monthly, or, you know, we can talk about it, but definitely. All right, great. All right, thank you very much for joining us, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar. As presented, item C one, consider twenty twenty-one meeting dates for the Historic District Commission, HDC. Item C two, authorization to pay bills when no regular board meeting is scheduled. Um, and finally, C three, the appointment of the Election uh Commission, appointment to the Election Commission of Stephen, Trustee Stephen Snyderman and Trustee Kate Borninsky.
Support. Thank you. The motion's been supported. Um, Clerk Segras, can we please have roll call vote on the motion?
Yeah, all right. Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Uh, Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Now we move on to our general calendar. So item G one is the first one. Can I hear motion for request renewal of Civic Plus website hosting services?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount not to exceed eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-three cents payable to Civic Plus Incorporated for a renewable, a renewal of hosting services, software support, and maintenance services provided by Civic Plus covering a period of one year.
Support.
Thank you. IT Services is requesting permission to renew our hosting services and support agreement with Civic Plus Incorporated, which expires on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. IT Services is recommending extending the current contract for a period of one year with Civic Plus to continue the hosting services, support, and access to Civic Plus custom-designed web content management system. Uh, Director Trumbull, would you like to add anything?
I have nothing to add unless there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Okay, great, thank you. Clerk Segras, can we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Fa- Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Segrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G two, can we have a motion for, to consider approval of an amended agreement with Indigo Golf Partners at Fellows Creek Golf Club?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board oh boy. My G drive dropped for a second. I'm working on this VBN.
You want me to read the motion, Michael?
Um, if you, if you want to, you can, but if you allow me.
Oh, I'll.
Navigate pretty quickly back, but um let's see here. Yeah, okay, I got it. Sorry about that. Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize amendment of the current contract agreement with Indigo Golf Partners by reducing the performance incentive for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one from twenty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars.
Support.
Thank you. Indigo Golf Partners, formerly known as Billy Casper Golf, has been a third-party management company at Canton-owned Fellows Creek Golf Club since two thousand thirteen. The current contract was amended in two thousand seventeen and states that Indigo Golf must repay Canton Township an annual performance incentive of up to four months' management fees of twenty thousand dollars. With the COVID nineteen pandemic negatively affecting primarily their banquet and outing business, Indigo's Golf is requesting Canton Township to amend the current agreement by reducing the performance incentive for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one from twenty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. The contract will return to current status of twenty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two for the remainder of the contract. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Uh, this is just, uh, we have three contracts on the agenda tonight with similar um issues where businesses, partners of ours have been affected by the COVID pandemic, um Fellows Creek, um Billy Casper, formerly Billy Casper Golf, I'm sorry, they had to rename under Indigo because of a licensing agreement with the Casper family, so they're now known as Indigo Golf. Had a good year golf-wise, but their banquet services were severely affected because they could not have indoor dining, and they had over twenty weddings scheduled to happen at the golf course this year that did not happen. Um, so the, the good thing is they've been able to um move the vast majority, I think twenty of the twenty-two weddings were able to reschedule for next year. So they're able to um move those people into future years, but uh this year, their, their revenue suffered, and the way the agreement works is all of the revenue and expenses are on our books, and we pay them a monthly management fee. If they don't meet the budgeted revenue um and expense, so basically the net at the end of the year that they projected, then they have to repay us up to twenty thousand dollars of those management fees, so this is um kind of splitting the pain between the township and um Indigo Golf for, for the lost business there to repay us ten thousand dollars of that because of unforeseen circumstances.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Stephen?
Um, yeah, thanks, Director Homberger. Um, I think that uh they've been doing a good job over the last several years. Um, I know that we have seen their numbers improve over time, and I don't remember if they were in the black or just under it or whatever, but I, I think, um, and they've made a lot of improvements to the organization, uh, to the venue um as an organization. So um, yeah, I'd be in support of doing this for them. How long is the contract, um, the remaining contract? Do you remember?
Oh, Craig, you're muted.
All right, I was trying to do this on split screens, and that's a little more challenging on my laptop than at my office. Um, give me just a second, and I will find that out.
Okay, or you can send it to us later. Um, did they change any personnel, by the way, when they made the change in name, or was it name only?
Yes, name only. They were, um, yeah, it, it's just been name only. Um, we're, we're working with the same people onsite, the same uh regional representative, so there's been consistency there.
Good, okay, thanks.
I'll have to email you. I don't have the exact dates in front of me for the length of their term.
No problem.
Thank you. So, Tony, you want to ask your question while he's looking for that?
Yeah, I just have a quick query. So are, did they just manage Fellows Creek or both the golf courses?
Just Fellows Creek. We internally operate um that run on our own, and it was a seven-year extension, I see, from seventeen, so it should be through twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so they do the entire management, just not catering, right?
All right, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Uh, they do, uh, they do, uh, the entire management is just not catering, right?
Correct. They run the golf course, the grill, um outings, leagues, everything out at uh Fellows Creek.
Thank you.
You could, Kate?
Um, I had the same question as Stephen about how much longer on the contract, so thank you.
Okay, until twenty twenty-four, okay. Michael?
Yeah, I just want to speak in, in, in support of this. Um, I, I, they've been great to work with. I believe it or not, not a wedding, but I had an event scheduled uh for the uh a catered event that was going to be scheduled the week after we had the Declaration of Emergency back in March, and so um it was a curveball for, for the organization I was working with. It was a curveball for um for their organization. They were extremely accommodating, and so um I think that they're doing a good job out there, and um, and I felt horrible uh backing out the way that we did from the event, and so look forward to going back there when uh this thing gets tamed, this COVID beast gets tamed, but um I would be in, in support of this.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, great, thank you. So Clerk Segras, can we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Uh, Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes for G two. So item G three, um can we please have a motion for consider approval of a twenty twenty-one purchase order to Roofing Technology Associates LTD for the roofing consulting services within the capital improvement plan, COS?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a twenty twenty-one purchase order for the Roofing Consulting Services within the Capital Improvement Plan to Roofing Technologies Associates LTD at three zero three one Schoolcraft Road, Levon, Michigan four eight one five zero, in the amount not to exceed forty-three thousand dollars to be paid from the following the attached CIP accounts.
Support.
Thank you. Canton Township currently holds a service contract with Roofing Technology Associates LTD for assistance in roofing consulting services. Leisure Services is recommending the RTA for the roofing design and consultation of all roof repairs and replacements under the Capital Improvement Plan for the proposed amount not to exceed forty-three thousand dollars. Um, Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Apparently, this is uh just an agreement with our consultant that we've been working with for years. They've been doing a great job over the years of inspecting all of our roofs on an annual basis, um helping to identify problems and potential solutions. We've worked with them, uh, they help develop the bid specs and are doing the inspections during the installation, quality control of the installation of the copper roof at the summit that is happening right now. If you drive by the summit, you'll notice a crane out there. Um, and we're looking to have them do similar work for all these various roofs that we have in the CIP going forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, Clerk Segras, can we please get a vote on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Run to item G four. Can I have a hear, a motion for consider approval of Skirbeck Entertainment Carnival Agreement Amendment and Extension for Liberty Fest?
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the amendment and contract extension with Skirbeck Entertainment Group, P O Box ten seventy Fenville, Michigan four nine four oh eight for the next uh five Liberty Festivals with Canton Township.
Support.
Thank you. In two thousand eighteen, Canton Township agreed to extend a five-year contract with Skirbeck Entertainment Group to be the sole carnival provider at the Canton Liberty Fest through twenty twenty-five. As part of the agreement to extend the additional five years, Skirbeck provided a ten thousand dollar signing bonus in addition to a one-time contribution of fifteen thousand dollars, which is to be, to be used for capital improvements in Heritage Park. As a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and twenty twenties cancellation, Skirbeck and Leisure Services are requesting that the contract language be amended to include the next five Liberty Festivals as opposed to the next five calendar years. In the event another future festival is canceled for any reason, this will provide the benefit of certainty and ease of planning for both parties for the life of the agreement. Uh, Director Homberger, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at this time unless there's further questions.
Any questions? Summer?
Greg, when do you have to decide um if we're moving forward with Liberty Fest in twenty twenty-one? And have you thought through what metrics you will use to make that decision?
Are very, two very good questions. Um, we're um probably by March, we'll need to make a, a decision on if we're going to move forward with a, a full festival, a modified festival, or no festival. Um, we're looking at, well, we'll be looking at where we're at with the vaccine. Another factor is our um uh testing slash vac- vaccinations, like, and the park will be utilizing some prime space that we use for parking and setup. So that may have an effect, so I anticipate that we will be making a recommendation in the next month or two uh to the supervisor, and then uh may come to the board. I'm not sure what the, how that will go forward, but we're going to be internally reviewing um if we can do maybe a scaled-down version of the festival, and what they're going to look like. Oh, geez, for, dog noise there.
It's baby Jack.
Apparently, the dogs didn't like what you had to say.
Oh, they, they want to have Liberty Fest.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kate?
Hey Greg, I was just wondering, um, you know, being new to the board and um and this happens to be up now, um wondering how much input does the township and leisure services have into what um kinds of um rides and, and other things that they provide? What, what kind of input do you have into that?
Well, we, we work very closely with the Skirbeck family on the carnival and the ride, so uh if you picture Liberty Fest, um, the, the portion that Skirbeck handles is everything inside of the carnival portion of the festival, so like elephant ears, the carnival food, the rides, ticket booths, everything inside of that portion of the festival um is handled by Skirbeck. Anything outside of that area, the bands, the restaurants, the, the food over on the let's see, that'd be the south side of the park by the pond, all of, all of those are separate vendors. Uh, but we work every year with Skirbeck to determine what rides they may be bringing in, um food items to make sure we're not competing too much, and they're very, very good to work with.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Michael?
I um oh, it escapes me. I knew I wanted to, I knew I had a question, and I just it's, said that toddler, and it just reached your brain. Um uh, could have been, oh, I was just going to make a point that um I know in a few weeks here, Plymouth will be doing the uh, the Ice Fest in a, in a muted fashion, and I'd be curious to see kind of what that looks like and um how successful that is. Um, that might be instructive to I know Liberty Fest and the Ice Fest are completely different events and occur at way different times of the year, but it would be interesting to kind of see. Um, because I know like what it looked like before and what it might look like this year, and if it's done safely, be curious.
Would certainly love to have Liberty Fest um as it was in point, well, actually. Would certainly love to have Liberty Fest um as it was in twenty, well, actually twenty eighteen when we had good weather. It's when we would really like to have it. But we're just, we don't wanna rush into having fifty thousand people jammed into a small area either if it's not gonna be safe.
Yeah, most definitely.
Tanya?
Yeah, so uh Director Homberger, will they work, will they work with these leisure services in our um Canton Township if we want to do, you know, a scaled down version if we decided to do something like that? Um because you know, there's next year, there we are giving them instead of paying us um a certain amount, we're asking them to pay less for the next year. So you think they're they're very good to work with in terms of?
Yeah, they they've, we've already. We've already had discussions with them about doing scaled down versions and they're very open to working with us on whatever may be acceptable. They did that with uh several festivals last year as well.
Thank you.
You know, the irony of Greg's dog barking while we talk about leisure fests is my first year on the board, I tried bringing my dog to leisure, to to Liberty Fest and Greg kicked me out because the dog. Dogs are not allowed at Liberty Fest, so don't bring, they do have it, don't bring your dog to Liberty Fest.
That's what they were mad about. Right, they wanna go do.
Oh, great, any other questions? Okay, great, Clerk Segras, can we please have a roll call and vote on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Yeah, uh Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hugh Deck.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Great, motion passes. On to item G five, I have a motion to consider approving the purchase of a one year service agreement for the Motorola Radio and Dispatch Council.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the twenty twenty one purchase of a Motorola Solutions one year service agreement for the Motorola Radio and Dispatch Council equipment in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred seventeen dollars.
Support.
Thank you, the Public Safety Department is requesting to purchase a one year service agreement with Motorola Solutions for coverage of the eight hundred megahertz Motorola Dispatch Radio and E nine eleven console components for twenty twenty one in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand five hundred seventeen dollars. The new agreement needs to be in place prior to January first to maintain seamless coverage for twenty twenty one. Director Bow, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, everyone, I just give you a idea, to replace a system like this, it would at least be one point eight million dollars. That's what we paid for it back in two thousand twelve. As a one year service agreement, we generally would like to see a three year service agreement, but this time Motorola Solutions was not prepared to offer something like that. They started in that direction and they pulled back and uh kept it at one year. Um it's the lifeline for our citizens and firefighters and police officers, so I do appreciate the support.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Kate?
More just a comment, um because when I read this, I was wondering why we weren't trying to go for um a multiple year agreement. And so I I appreciate the explanation, um but I hope that the, you know, the company will work with us in the future or if we decide to go with a different company, um that we can do something, you know, that will give us more continuity and also um maybe at a better price, so thanks.
Certainly agree, I think this is more of a blip and a bam, I'm not certain what's going on. Motorola uh essentially has the monopoly on the eight hundred megahertz radios for the state, so they have the contracts, so we'll find out next year.
No other questions? Okay, Clerk Segras, can we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hugh Deck.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G six, consider approval of payment of the annual software license fee to Kerry Works for the on base document management system.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve payment of eleven thousand three hundred ninety seven dollars and fourteen cents for the annual software license fee to Kerry Works for the on base document management system.
Support.
Thank you. Implementation of on base document management system is ongoing to the public, in the Public Works Division of Municipal Services. To date, over thirty two thousand water stop box locations and numerous development associated drawings and documents have been put into the system. These documents have also been attributed to assets within our current G I S framework. The project will continue to over the forthcoming years as we continue to populate the system with archived documents. The cost of the software license is eleven thousand three hundred and ninety seven dollars and fourteen cents to be funded by the Water and Sewer Fund. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
Um yeah, just a couple of things, um as in Director Boaz's last item as well. We inquired in a longer term for this than just one year and Kerry Works does not offer longer maintenance um agreements than that. So we will work on um on working with them to see, because it's something that's not gonna go away. Um so we were a little taken back by that. Then the other thing too is that you may notice that the invoice was dated um some time ago and this invoice was actually sent to the inadvertently sent to the wrong email address. So we did not receive it until about a week and a half ago. So just wanted to clear those two items up. And other than that, I've got to answer any questions.
Thank you, are there any questions? Steven?
Um, thanks Director Smith, um do you know about what percentage is complete in terms of um storing these documents? Migrating them to the system?
Um it's an ongoing basis, I can tell you that um probably seventy percent of what was in the building um department um is being worked on for, I'm sorry, is in the system. And then all of the utilities through Public Works, that's all in the system now. That was part of the Saw Grant, that's how program got brought on board um to begin with and was funded when uh that grant was still available.
Gotcha.
Michael?
Um so just a a a comment to to this project, I had looked at doing um the same, using Kerry Works and on base for uh document management for the clerk's office. Um we got a quote back from them that was a little bit more, I think, than we anticipated, we did not budget it. And uh and so um I don't know what we're gonna do with the clerk's office. Um yeah, however, I am gonna go through the the filing system that was quoted because I know we have a number of documents that are well beyond their um useful life. They're no longer required to be retained and they have no historical value. Um yeah, we've got a lot of that and so we'll probably spend this year, uh twenty twenty one going through our filing system and then maybe get a second quote at the end to see what's what's remaining and then what we might want to retain electronically um or not. But as far as the the this, uh no, this is great, I'm in support of this. Just wanted to give an update to the board on kind of the clerk's office with that.
Thank you, any other questions or comments, Tanya?
Yeah, as a new person on the board, I just had a quick question about the system. So the software, you're just paying the software licensing fees to this company, right? And they they do the work for us or do we use the software to archive the documents?
Yeah, they, so basically they store the, once it's scanned, they store the documents for us and we utilize this service out in the field. So when we have our staff is out there looking for stop boxes or looking for plans, they can actually go into the on base system and pull those plans up um to their computer or their tablets. So it's a storage facility, I don't know, I mean, I T is involved in this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? No, great, Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll on the motion?
Yes, Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
I'm Hugh Deck.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next item, G seven, consider two appointments and one reappointment to the Planning Commission.
Uh Madam Supervisor, this is in the form of two motions, by the way. Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Harpreet Sakdeva and Doug Weber to the Canton Township Planning Commission with terms to expire December thirty one, twenty twenty three.
So two vacancies have been created on the Planning Commission by one member moving out of the Canton community and another member choosing not to apply for reappointment. In addition, another commissioner, Alan Onkin, has a term expiring on December thirty first, twenty twenty. Alan is interested in reappointment. Information was put in the November Focus Newsletter asking for individuals interested in serving on the Planning Commission to submit an application and resume. The boards and committees, commissions, interview committee meant to review all resumes submitted and chose five candidates to interview. Interviews took place on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. The committee agreed to recommend Doug Weber and Harpreet Sakdeva to the Board of Trustees for new appointments and also to recommend the reappointment of Alan Onkin. And I'd just like to say that um we had twenty four resumes, so a lot of people want to get involved and so that's really great. Um does any, and we do, I just wanted to shout out that we do have in our audience, we have Hart Preet and Doug Weber. Um Summer?
Um I just wanted to mention that I thought the interview process went really well. I was happy that we had the input of um Patrick, who's the township planner, um as we were choosing people to be on the planning. I'm really glad that we put, that we implemented the interview committee. Um and I know that we have a lot of folks that applied for planning and we only had um three positions, but a lot of the people that applied also applied for other boards and commissions. So I think we will be able to consider some of those folks in the future. Um we are planning to meet in the next couple of weeks to consider applicants for the tax board of review, but this was a really good process and I would like to see us at some point create an ordinance, making the interview committee official township policy instead of something that's just what what we have been doing.
Good idea, thank you. Anyone else, Steven?
Um can't add too much more to that, um just to say that I thought these three um uh candidates were um the most qualified. They had some great answers to the questions and um and also have really good backgrounds um that I think will help the Planning Commission. So looking forward to seeing them start working on it.
Thank you, any other, Michael?
I just wanted to thank um Trustee Foster and Snyderman for um their work on the uh the other interview, the Appointment Interview Committee that goes to the office, the supervisor, obviously thank the supervisor herself for continuing that process, I think it's fantastic. I looked at the bios or the resumes of both individuals we're talking about right now. Um extremely well qualified individuals, I think they're gonna do some great work on on the Planning Commission, so I'm excited about that. And then I was glad to see that Mister uh that Alan had had reapplied to be, and that's obviously a second motion, but um you know, he's been doing good work so far too on planning, so that's great. And it's awesome to see individuals um applying for these positions and for all of these, these committee positions, which is something I think we didn't necessarily have in previous years, so that that renewed interest is fantastic.
Any other questions or comments, Tanya?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree uh with what Michael was saying and, you know, I really liked how, I I really liked the resumes of the people there and especially the reappointment of Alan, who is um, you know, lead certified uh person, very important asset for the Planning Commission and um also the other two, um I think are very, it looks very qualified and I also agree with Summer that um this process of everybody able to submit their, you know, resumes and uh and creating an open process and making it official is a great step to move forward in having um very well qualified people from the community apply to these positions and everyone knows what's going on.
Thank you, anyone else? Hey Clerk Segras, can we have a roll call on the vote on the first motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hugh Deck.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
First motion passes. Can you hear the second motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move to reappoint Alan Onkin, or Alan Onkin to the Canton Township Planning Commission with a term to expire uh December thirty one, twenty twenty three.
Support.
Thank you, any, well, we already spoke, so um Clerk Segras, can we have a roll call on the second motion?
Yeah, Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Uh Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hugh Deck.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, second motion passes also. Item G eight, consider approval of an agreement for lobbying services between Canton Township and Corey Johnson Leaveit, uh who you just heard earlier today.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve a two year agreement with Corey Johnson Leaveit LLC for governing, government lobbying services and authorize the Township Supervisor to sign on behalf of Canton Township for an amount not to exceed thirty six thousand dollars per year.
Support.
Thank you. Given the political climate in the state of Michigan and the number of bills that impact local government, the need to work with lobbying firm to be our eyes and ears in Lansing has become a necessity. Since August first, two thousand fifteen, Canton Township has had an agreement to provide legislative support and lobbying services. Our current agreement expires on December thirty first, twenty twenty. The supervisor and Corporation Council have been highly satisfied with the service provided by Corey Johnson Leaveit LLC and would like to enter into a new two year agreement beginning in January of twenty twenty one and expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty two. K J L has agreed to the same compensation rate that we have had for the last two years for the new agreement. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll make a brief comment if I may.
Mm-hmm.
Um you know, one of the unintended consequences of term limits in the state of Michigan is that legislators will get six years in the House of Representatives and then eight years if they're lucky in the in this, in the Senate, in the state senate, which is just about enough time to learn how to do the job and develop the relationships to actually pass meaningful legislation. So one of the unintended consequences of of doing term limits is that we have pull people from these positions right when they get good at it. And what it does is it empowers lobbyists and interest groups in Lansing to really make policy. It's unfortunate that we don't necessarily have citizen legislators up there writing and drafting bills and understanding the intricacies of what they are necessarily doing. Um now there are some good people up there doing good meaningful work, but that is something that has been a a a criticism of Michigan and it's been used when other states uh talk about wanting to implement term limits or when they talk about doing term limits at the federal level. It's unfortunate, but in that environment, I think it's necessary for the township to have a lobbyist on our side in 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 inside there. We saw that when a legislator who is, who owned a owned um a lumber mill and uh and tried to take away local units of governments ability to have things like a tree ordinance. And we saw the importance of having a lobbyist during that fight when they were advocating for local control and advocating for the our environment and the natural beauty of Canton Township. And so I was really grateful to see them in there um fighting for us, so I I I'm in support of this contract.
Thank you, Summer?
Yeah, just really quickly, um I would agree with um Michael. I think one of the things that having um them on the team does is alert us when things are um going through the legislature, especially when things are moving really fast during times like lame duck. And so we're able to um, you know, get the word out on whether legislation would be good for our community or not. And the other thing that I really appreciated their support on a year ago was to help us find the funding for the opioid recovery program, um they worked extremely on that, so um they've been great to work with.
Thank you, Steven.
Um, I guess this is an opportunity for me to show a little bit of history in my term on here. My my third term, being my third term on here, is that um I was really surprised in two thousand and thirteen when the township decided to go with a lobbyist. Um a- at the time, the legislature um had a Republican majority and so did our township. And I I was actually very pleased to see them move forward. I figured that they they felt that they could just talk to their um counterparts in Lansing and get things done. Um but I think they started. But I think they started to realize that local government, municipal government isn't always have the same issues that the, that the state government has on a party line. And so I, I actually was happy to see this and I think it's been working really well for the last seven years. And I think we've gotten a lot accomplished, so I, I'm glad to vote yes to see it continue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tanya?
Yeah, as a new person on the board, the couple of times I've heard and also when I've heard the legislative updates as just a guest on the, you know, on the meeting. And I've heard them and it's very informative and it's very important that they give us all these updates so that we understand what is working in our favor. You know, as governments, as local governments, we always need to work with state and federal governments on many issues. So I think I really support continuing working with them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Diane?
I'll just say, I'll just say something quick too. Everybody has great points and I, I agree as well. Having somebody up in Lansing, their eyes and ears to let us know about legislation that's out there so that we can call our legislators and committee members to let them know how it impacts local government. Because I was up there one time and a lot of different things are going on. Even with this lame duck, there's some legislation that if the governor signs it, I have to be ready and prepared to, to let the residents know of some changes about taxes and that. So I'm really glad that we have them up there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kate?
Thank you. I too support this. I think it's really important to have some eyes and ears up in Lansing to let us know what's going on. And, you know, we can't monitor the, the house TV and the senate TV all, all the time. And so it's good to, to have someone who will help us out with that.
Thank you. And I know a lot, some of our directors also use Stephanie, you know, so it's, it is an advantage. Anyone else? Great, thank you. So Clerk Seagres, can we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gunguli.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagres, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman. Steven, I.
He's muted.
The spacebar wasn't working. Sorry. Hi.
When I'm on my laptop, I have to like toggle between screens. So I don't have, I don't have dual monitors, so I have no idea what's going on when I'm.
Banging on the spacebar, but it wasn't unmuted, so.
Well, thank you. That motion passes. Last item on the general calendar, consider approval of amended agreement with dancing fees at the summit on the park.
And if it would please the supervisor, I will merge these two motions into one for the sake of prosperity. They're, they're linked. Then supervisor, I move to authorize the amendment of the lease agreement for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dance season and provide a waiver to a portion of the guaranteed amount of twenty thousand, six hundred and four dollars fifty cents annually and two thousand, six hundred and twenty seven dollars and seven cents monthly fee owed by Dancing Feet Incorporated. The total amount to be waived is twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety one dollars and fifteen cents. And further, to allow for the amendments to be made to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one dance season with a waiving of the, the annual lump sum payment of twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars fifty seven cents and to charge a monthly lease fee in the amount of one thousand, sixty six dollars fifty nine cents, beginning with October of twenty twenty.
Support.
Thank you. Dancing Feet has been a longstanding partner of Canton Township and a resident dance company for many years. In two thousand and seventeen, Canton Leisure Services and Dancing Feet extended that partnership with a five-year agreement. As with most businesses, the COVID nineteen pandemic has had a significant impact on Dancing Feet, who as a result requires several amendments made to modify the terms to their current contract for twenty twenty. Dancing Feet was unable to host classes in the summit on the park from mid-March until October fifth, twenty twenty, due to the extended closure of the facility. An amendment to the agreement is needed in order to waive the monthly fees from the period of time the summit was closed in March, April and May. Furthermore, due to the inability to host a recital in twenty twenty, the twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty seven cent prepayment amount to Canton will also be waived. Dancing Feet and Leisure Services have agreed to a forty percent monthly lease fee based on participant registration for the months of October twenty twenty through May twenty twenty one. Both parties agree to meet again to discuss terms moving forward and based on available activity levels. Should additional amendments be required, the terms of the agreement will be brought back to the board. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything other than that?
Certainly, this is the, the last of a series of contracts that we're bringing to the board for amendments based on effects our partner groups. Dancing Feet has been with the summit, actually they've been with the township prior to the summit ever being built. They were dancing in the lower level of the administration building prior to the summit being built. And then were involved in the design of the summit dance studios when the summit was being constructed. They've been a good partner for us, with us for many years and we're just trying to work with them. We know that if we don't provide this relief to them, they won't be able to, the way we're basically putting them out of business should we choose not to do this.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Kate?
Thanks. So I, I think that this is something that we need to do to help out Dancing Feet. That they have been in the community for a long time. My, my own daughter, who is going to be twenty four tomorrow, started dancing with Dancing Feet twenty years ago. She no longer dances, but when we used their classes, it was wonderful. And a lot of families that I know have had kids go through Dancing Feet. And honestly, to think that leisure services wouldn't be providing any sort of dance program or that Dancing Feet wouldn't be providing a dance program at the summit would be just, I think, something that, you know, a community that is as cultured as ours, that would just be a, a community that was lacking. So I fully support this.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I, I agree very much with Kate's comments on this. It has been an institution in our community and I have known many friends, children going to Dancing Feet and have even gone to their performances. And even though they were not able to practice, they, they put together a fabulous performance for our holiday, you know, the virtual holiday celebrations. They did a performance there and I look forward to seeing them every year during our holiday celebrations. So I really think that we should help them to keep them afloat and so that they can give us more programs and help cultivate this culture in our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Steven?
Honestly, I think the director should have presented this along with a musical number, but, but I think the terms are pretty good. So I, I look reasonable to me and understandable, so I will, I'll be voting for it.
I'll work on that for future RBAs.
Please think of that, yeah.
Please, please tell Greg.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Perhaps trustee Snyderman would like to help out with the dancing.
I'll join in. Okay. I always wanted to be a song and dance man.
Anyone else? Okay, great. Clerk Seagres, can we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Borninsky. Foster.
Hi.
Gunguli.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagres, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Great. That concludes the general calendar. Do we have any further public comment? I see we have four attendees. Do we have any comments? I see also in the chat that we had our new planning commission members saying that they're grateful to serve the community and they're looking forward to it. So that was great. Any other public comment? You can raise your hand if you would like. Okay, thank you. Any director comments? Comments from the directors? Director Stockline, I don't know if you want to talk about our testing vaccination site that's almost open for COVID nineteen?
Yeah, I can speak about it. So we've been working through some details with the county. Obviously, you know, it always changes, right? So we are currently scheduled for January seventh. We may end up having, we have a meeting tomorrow and we may end up bringing a temporary trailer before the temporary trailer gets here. So we're working through a bunch of these details, making sure that we have internet service for it. Make sure that we have the lighting, making sure that we have the port so that people are not standing outside in the weather. So a lot, a lot of things going into it, working with leisure services and it was with MSD, making sure that the permits are pooled. So a lot of working parts, the, the county is very anxious to get it moving. And they, you know, continue to acknowledge that we are far ahead of everyone else. So it just goes to show all the hard work that we're doing together as a team is really paying off. And I believe that we will set the example for the, for the other sites that are coming through. So good news. And then once we get the, the okay on that, I would imagine it'll be just a short time before they bring the vaccinations to us as well.
Great, thank you.
Just one question on that. Chris, do you know how, when it's with the county, how the cost is to the community? And is it, is there any cost to people being tested and do they have to have insurance, things like that?
So everything that I've heard so far that it should be covered by, by the county. And then, and that goes for the vaccinations as well. So I think that's a federal price tag that is going to be covered by the fed, federal government. So at this point, we really have been fortunate to get reimbursements on all this stuff. I know that there's a couple other bills that have recently passed in order to get some of that funding back that came through today as well. So we should be covered. I know that right now we're, we're working through some of those small budget amendments compared to the twenty four thousand that we brought to the board originally. But we'll work through that and make sure that we're up and running because we know that getting that service out to the citizens is going to be the most important thing that we can do.
Any other director comments or Summer?
Yeah, I have a question for Chris. I know that there are a couple of different testing methods. Like there's the rapid test, the PCR test, I think, and then there's a saliva test. And there are a couple of different vaccines that are approved now and one, I think one requires two doses and one only requires one dose. Do we have any idea like what testing method we will be using and which vaccine, vaccine we will be giving out? And how we're going to help people keep track if they have to have the two vaccines?
Yeah, so the only ones that are approved currently are double dose vaccines. So the Pfizer and, and the Moderna are both double vaccines. They are working through, I, I heard something on the news today of twenty eight different possible vaccines, which becomes a whole other issue because they're not going to have the participants to, to be evaluated in those, you know, because everybody's going to rush out to get these. So it's going to make it complicated. And the first one doesn't always necessarily mean it's going to be the best one, right? So there's a lot of things that go into it. Currently, the two that are approved are both double shots and they receive a card when they get signed. The Pfizer is, I believe, twenty one days and Moderna is twenty eight days. I could have them backwards, but either way, when you get that first vaccination, they will, they will let you know when you need to return. And it will be to the same site to get that vaccination. And then as far as the testing goes, we will not be doing the rapid testing, so it will be sent out and we don't do the saliva testing. So it's the one that is very uncomfortable that they put up the nose and they tickle your brain a little bit and then get the results back. The good news is, is that we hopefully will, with working with the county, have those results with a really quick turnaround time of within twenty four hours. So that's the biggest part right now.
Thank you.
Kate?
Thanks. While we're on the subject of COVID nineteen, Chris, I was wondering if our first responders have started receiving the vaccine. I, I have a friend who's a firefighter in Sterling Heights and I know he got vaccinated with his first dose today. So just wondering if we have any progress here in Canton.
So that's a great question. Thanks for asking. We actually had about half of the firefighters vaccinated yesterday and then the other half today. There's still a few that have chosen not to do it at this point. So they're just kind of still a little bit leery and, and we will continue to work with them. We, you know, our, our goal is to have everyone vaccinated just to protect everybody and protect the organization. So we'll continue to work on that and as, as they feel comfortable. We, we haven't placed any mandates on any employees at this point. So, but good news is that we've, we've already got those vaccinations going, so.
Greg?
I just wanted to further respond to trustee Foster, the, the different vaccines. From the, the discussions, leisure services, public safety and emergency management have all been involved in getting this site up and ready. And it's been a great partnership, everybody working together. From what I recall, the county also said that once they get one type of vaccine, whether it's Pfizer or Moderna, whatever it is, that would be the only vaccine that they would be distributing at this site. So you wouldn't have one person getting a Moderna, one person getting a Pfizer and some confusion about you have to wait twenty one days, you have to wait twenty eight days. And then, oh, we only have Pfizer today, you need to get your Moderna, whatever. It'll just be one kind of vaccine that'll be distributed from this site, so it'll be easier for everybody.
Thank you, Greg.
Any other comments on the testing or the vaccination site? Okay, any good news?
I have, well, I don't have, it's good news. It's good news. It just, you know, township hall is closed and it's to keep residents and staff safe. That being said, the treasurer's office is going to be open tomorrow from ten in the morning till two for cash payments only, please. We have a drop box. If you want a receipt, we're more than happy to mail you a receipt. I want so badly to make sure that the numbers continue to go down. I know we all know people who have had COVID and we've had people lose their lives from COVID. So we want to keep everybody safe. So we are going to be open tomorrow from ten to two. We will be screening people at the door. We expect you to wear a mask and social distance is a must. We'll have little Xs on the floor to keep people distant. But I do ask, please, cash only and, and be patient. If you put your payment in the drop box and you request a receipt, we're more than happy to mail you a receipt. We just want to make sure everybody stays safe so that next year at this time, we can all celebrate together and everybody will be here. So I appreciate everybody's patience, but please, cash only tomorrow from ten to two. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bow, were you going to say something?
I could, you know, if twenty twenty ending here, hopefully is, we've seen a real challenging year. Our officers really rose to occasion. We've had some extraordinary events that we've seen over the last week in the news. But I think it's important to remember, we've had some great engagement opportunities with our fire department and leisure services. Just, I think we're up to about twenty five families we were able to help this year, providing different types of things. And one example was firefighters had to deal with an apartment fire where a family was displaced. And I think we're able to raise up to a thousand dollars with Canton Cares and some other things that were raised internally within our department. So that was good. And the Salvation Army Red Kettle Campaign, that was good. We were able to give out fourteen hundred masks that day. So that, that was nice. And we teamed up with leisure services with the winter snow spree. So I think we had about a hundred vehicles out that day and the police department gave some cookies and milk with leisure services. So it worked out pretty well.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, it looks. Thank you. Clerk Segers, it looks like Harpreet wanted to say something. I know for public comment, I probably went through that too quickly. Can we, can he speak?
Mr. Seshdava has been promoted to panelist. Please feel free to address the pod.
Harpreet, you're unmuted, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I apologize. My dog is eating behind.
There you go. All right. Hello, everybody. Question for Chris, the new site, which he was just talking about, do we need any prior appointments for that or is just a walk-in?
So that will be by appointment only and we will make sure that when we have that information and how we're going to start scheduling those appointments, we will get that out to the public. We'll put it on Facebook as well as getting through the, the meetings here. We'll make sure that everyone's aware of that and we can get you all scheduled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other director or board comments? Okay, I do also want to say, oh, go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, didn't want to steal what you were saying, but I was just, I was just going to say that. I just wanted to, of course, this is the end of the year, our last meeting of the year. And I just want to say, in what has to be the most difficult year of any of our lives, that probably most anybody's life since the world war, really, that I'm just really proud of this organization and, and how it stepped up over the last twelve months. So, and if you can spread that word, madam supervisor, to those who aren't here tonight. And I just think everybody really understood everything and played their part and, and had we had one goal of making sure that everybody stays safe and healthy. And I think everybody did a really great job of doing that. And I'm very proud to be part of this organization because of it.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, thank you. It's not as inspirational with Stephen just did. Thank you, Stephen, for those kind words. I was just going to notify the group that in future meetings, you'll, you'll probably see a revamp or a change in, in minute presentation. We're going to do a different format. It looks a little bit more jazzier. My deputy clerk, Anthony, came up with something that looks a little better than what we've been doing in the past. And also I believe everybody on the board was given the policy for the conduct of board meetings. Hopefully you've all had a chance to read that document. It is recommended by the MTA and the Michigan Municipal League that new bodies or new boards, when they take office, that they review the policies and procedures for their, for how they're supposed to be governed and decide if they want to ratify that and, and work under those rules. So I don't know. I imagine anywhere we'll be doing a lot of things, but I would just ask people to look that document over and decide if they're comfortable with things that we've done as, as policy or procedure or sometimes as tradition. One would be that every motion is read by the clerk. This was something that was implemented to make the, the meeting go faster. But maybe it makes some people bored during the board meeting. I don't know. So just, just putting that out there. That might be something we want to do in January. But I don't want to do an entire meeting on them. The last time we did that, I think I almost put the directors to sleep. So I won't, won't do that again. But I just wanted to kind of put that out to everybody because we don't get an opportunity to talk as a group very often.
Does anyone else else have anything? I just wanted to add that I know we didn't say it tonight, but Summer Foster, trustee Summer Foster will be the board representative to the Planning Commission. And Tanya Ganguly will be the board representative to the Cultural Commission. So I just wanted to let everybody know that too. And yeah, this is, I, thank you. This is a end of the year meeting. Just want to add for everybody to stay safe. Continue watching our website and happy holidays and a happy new year to everyone. Also, it's been a long year. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Support.
Great. Clerk Segers, can you please take a roll call to adjourn?
Borninsky.
Aye, and happy holidays, happy new year.
Foster.
Aye, happy holidays, happy new year. Stay safe, everybody.
Ganguly.
Aye, happy holidays, happy new year. And hopefully we'll see each other in person in the coming year.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist Aye. Evans?
Aye, and stay safe, happy holidays and happy new year. And I too hope we see each other face to face soon.
And Snyderman?
Aye. Have a good holiday, everybody. See you next year.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.